Before we move on, the city has arranged for Spanish interpreters for tonight's public hearing, and they will now make an announcement about how to participate in the hearing.
Tenés que venir aquí en frente.
Gracias a todos por venir esta noche. Bienvenidos. Si necesitan hacer un comentario público en español referente a la redistribución, por favor, siéntanse con la confianza de pedir nuestros servicios cuando ya llegue el momento. Gracias.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of March 15, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here.
And let the public know that I am viewing from my office because I had had back surgery. Please. One thing, if people can turn off their mics because I'm getting a lot of background noise, would help.
Well, in order to keep you on the microphone, I need the public to hear any comments, I'm going to have to keep you on the microphone, but we'll try to do that in between conversations, okay?
Okay, that sounds great, Arnaud. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
In case if you didn't hear it, Ms. Waterfield will not be in attendance tonight because she just is recovering from back surgery, so she's on the phone.
Yes.
The first item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation. Yes.
I need to make one announcement.
Oh, okay.
Also, I was going to do that before we called roll, but just to let you know that we do have a telephone phone-in option that we published on the agenda available tonight for general public comment and for the redistricting public hearing, and those calls will be handled by Beth Cleary, our deputy, either by bringing me phone messages, which I have received at least one at this time, and if it's close to the hearing time or during the hearing, she will put them on the broadcast by microphone. If not, I will be kind of summarizing their phone call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first item is Mr. Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I give this proclamation, I would like to, this day, would like to talk about autism, which despite having been detected since 1943, goes unnoticed for many of us. A few weeks ago, I met with Yesenia, and she approached to me to request a proclamation in order to spread information about, to raise awareness in our community about these, the challenges that this disease entails. It's important to share the information in order to understand and be empathetic with the people who live with this disease, families, community members, and kids, everybody. And I thank the mayor and council members for supporting this proclamation that reflects our vocation to serve our community. Whereas autism is a complex neurological disorder that typically lasts throughout a person's lifetime, and is part of a group known as autism spectrum disorders, or ASDs. And whereas autism affects all persons regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic status, or geographic, and whereas disparities in access to healthcare, education, and services have placed an undue burden on individuals with disabilities and their loved ones. And whereas one in 44 childrens in the U.S. is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, and whereas individuals with ASDs and their families face tremendous and overwhelming challenges in accessing and navigating the complex programs and services for these disorders, and whereas early intervention can improve learning, communication, and social skills, as well as underlying brain development. Now here, therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2, 2022, as National Autism Awareness Day. In the City of Santa Maria, I encourage businesses and residents to recognize the talents, abilities, and contribution of individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. And to receive this proclamation, we have Kristin Escobedo, Assistant Superintendent for Santa Barbara County Special Education.
Thank you very much. I just have a few words to share. Thank you, Mayor Patino, and Councilmember Escobedo, and the entire Santa Maria City Council for recognizing April 2 as National Autism Awareness Day in alignment with World Autism Awareness Day. And on behalf of Dr. Susan Salcedo, Superintendent of Schools for the Santa Barbara County, and all of us at SBCEO, we thank you for this proclamation. Throughout Santa Barbara County, districts provide services to students in special education. As educators, we are grateful for the ongoing collaboration with the families of our students. Thank you, Yesenia Hernandez, for bringing this idea to the council's attention. We are very, very grateful to you for bringing this forward. Finally, I'd like to thank all of the teachers, general education, and special education, related services staff, paraprofessionals, administrators, and families throughout all districts in Santa Barbara County who work together regularly to enable the success of our students with autism. And I would like to just acknowledge one of those teachers who's here tonight, Sylvia Baeza. She is a teacher of one of our preschool special education classes here in Santa Maria, and she's joined us this evening, and she also has the opportunity to work with Ms. Hernandez as well. So thank you and for all that you do, and thank you to everyone who supports individuals with autism.
I was going to ask you that. Thank you very much. That is such a special need that is, we need to be much more aware of than we are. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very timely proclamation at this particular time. I take it that you're, Mr. Tony Briggs, since you've got the Red Cross shirt on?
Yes.
Okay. With all of the things that are going on in the world today, I hope that the public takes special notice of this. I'm sure that the Red Cross is involved in Europe in handling some things there. And so I say this with great passion and hope that we get somebody to do something and help this great organization to ease the pain of some of these people that are going through over there. It's a proclamation, and whereas in times of crisis, people in the City of Santa Maria come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of the community, and it is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas in 1881, Clara Burton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas in the City of Santa Maria, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers gives hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by the local disaster-like home fires, donating essential blood for the accidents and burn victims, heart surgeries, and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas, the month of March is dedicated to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Burton, who lived by her words. You must never think of anything except the need of how to meet it, and how to meet it. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the month of March 2022 as Red Cross Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to give back to the community and to offer support for the humanitarian mission. This is witnessed by and signed by Mayor Patino with the seal of the great city of Santa Maria, fixure two on the 15th day of March 2022. And here to receive this is Tony Briggs.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you so very much. On behalf of the folks that make this engine move, which is our volunteers, we thank you. We know we could not do this alone, and with everything that is going on in the world, the world looks to the American Red Cross to be there. And right now, I can tell you that the American Red Cross has people in Europe right now making sure that our service members who are forward-deployed have everything that they need as far as comforts from home. We are also tasked with making sure that if there is an emergency back home, that those service members will get word via the American Red Cross, as we are the only non-governmental partner that has this wonderful job. I can tell you that day after day, the American Red Cross is here. When someone has a fire at 2:00 in the morning, after the fire department leaves, the American Red Cross is there. They're there with a warm blanket, a meal, and some money just to make sure that people can be safe, and they have something to look forward to. So on behalf of the volunteers and staff, thank you so much for recognizing March is Red Cross Month. Thank you.
I know several years ago, when our hotel burnt down, Town Center Hotel burnt down, the Red Cross was there to help us, and I know we had to move people over to Manami Center to house them, and then the Red Cross did help us get them into housing. So thank you very much. It's a great organization. Next, we have a public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Unless speaker is being assisted by an interpreter, then six minutes would be allowed. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers would be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. Madam Mayor, staff received written comment from Francisco Agüino asking that the city maintain a healthy relationship with skateboarders, and Wyatt Russell wrote in commenting on helmet laws for skateboarders. And there are currently two requests to speak here in the building, and then we will check to see if we have any callers on the line who wish to make general comments.
Thank you. So Wyatt Russell, followed by Gary Hall. Mr. Russell?
Hi, Councilmembers and Madam Mayor. I wrote online as well. Are you going to read that, or you just want me to speak right now?
You just speak, uh-huh.
All right. So there are helmet laws at the Santa Maria Skate Park, and they're enforced by our city rangers, and it's kind of like, almost defeats the purpose of having a skate park because skateboarding culture goes deep, and we don't really, like, use helmets, you know, as, you know, a safety concern. It's not much of a concern. I mean, I could go into, like, we hardly ever, you know, hit our heads, but as it is, it's just like not something we do, and to want to go skateboard and then being kicked out of our only, like, reserved area that's truly meant for skateboarding is just, like, kind of, you know, defeats the purpose of even having the park. So I think if we could look into changing the laws on the helmet requirements at our skate parks, that would be great. It's not like that in anywhere else in, you know, Santa Barbara, Slow County. There's nothing enforced as far as that goes, only here in Santa Maria. And, you know, I just think it'd be a good point to bring up how it takes a lot of youth off the streets, really, just to be able to, like, go to a skate park and be there. And, you know, it's kind of a healthy, really, actually a healthy outlet for our community to be able to go there. So when we're there, and then, you know, the city rangers show up and they say, like, get out of here, it's, you know, as nice as they may be, it's still, it's kind of like, you know, kind of plants seeds of, you know, maybe just seed towards, you know, like, local government, or just like the town in general, you know? So, you know, how negativity can kind of just like snowball, you know? And it's also a good point to bring up, skateboarders aren't going to stop skating. So we can't skate at the skate park. We're going to go to anywhere, private property, the ledges that are right behind you. If you skate right there, you know? And most people don't like that, you know? Most people who don't skateboard aren't really, they don't like it, you know? So we don't want to be destroying private property, but we do want to skate. We love skateboarding. It's part of our soul, you know? It means a lot to us to be able to get on our board and roll around. So just, you know, having that freedom of being able to go to the park and not having to wear a helmet, not feeling like we're under, you know, like, being enforced, you know? Having a bit of freedom there would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Good evening, Mr. Hall. Good evening. This is a serious transition from skateboarding issue, but let me try it. Good evening. My name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team. A month ago, I read to you excerpts from the October 1999 unadopted ordinance number 99-18 titled "Mobile Home Rent Control," where it was proclaimed, the city council, this is in parentheses, "The city council finds and declares it necessary to protect the owners and occupiers of mobile homes from unreasonable rents," close parentheses. Unfortunately, that city council was unable to deliver that protection, and instead produced the original hollow and unenforceable 1999 model lease. Now, fast forward to November of 2019, and the passage of the model lease 2020 by a different city council. It's yet another model lease which failed to conform to what the mobile home residents asked for and fought for. And to add insult to injury based on recent findings, and at least one mobile home park, the model lease 2020 is also unenforceable. One of the original parks to sign the 2020 enforcement agreement apparently has decided to ignore the agreement. Other parks, like La Maria, have never even been made available to them the model lease for their residents. Mobile home residents are asking each of you council members to help clear the way for a fair and open debate, to allow mobile home residents and their legal counsel to dispel park owner rumors and potentially negative outcomes, to allow the property rights of the mobile homeowners to be viewed at least equal to the property rights of the park owners who don't even live in Santa Maria. We are in hopes that you will acknowledge our appeals and do the right thing by adding mobile home rent stabilization to the agenda of a future meeting. It's time to either fix and renegotiate the model lease and enforcement agreement, or consider our proposed 2019 mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. The mobile home residents of Santa Maria need and deserve your help. You have a real chance to provide that help and protect mobile home space affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments? Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, would you please read item number three?
I just want to confirm, Deputy City Clerk, we did not receive any comments for on the line? Okay, thank you. Consent calendar routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Thank you. So does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Dorian? None? None? Okay. Wait, I keep forgetting she's there. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Oh, move, Your Honor. Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, having heard a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from National Demographics Corporation in NDC on draft maps, provide direction on revisions to draft maps, and introduce an ordinance amending the city's municipal code regarding elections to adopt city council electoral district maps based on the 2020 census.
Okay, so the staff report and introductions are being made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Just by way of introduction, this is our fourth off-site meeting for the city council to hear from the public to consider redistricting of the voting districts for the City of Santa Maria City Council. We have, since the last meeting, developed draft maps and received two public maps, so there are six total maps that have been produced from NDC, from our consultant, Daniel Phillips, and he is here tonight to be able to walk us through the maps that are available for council's consideration tonight. The objective tonight is hopefully the council will be able to adopt one of the maps as an introduction to an ordinance for a first reading, and then return April 5 for a second reading in order to adopt a final map ahead of the state deadline of April 17. And there are, Daniel Phillips can walk us through the process of where we are now and the map options, and some flexibility, if any, that the council has. If the council does modify a map or come up with a different map tonight, we would need to call a special meeting in order to meet that timeline as required by the state. So there are options for the council tonight, but we'll turn it over to Daniel Phillips at this point to walk you through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Good to be with you again. As a reminder, this process has entailed four total public hearings, including two that were held last summer before any draft plans were presented. And then we had our first post-draft hearing a couple of weeks back, and then tonight is the second and the final public hearing. So the idea is that tonight there will be an adoption of one of the plans and a first reading, to be followed by a second reading on April 5, but as Mr. Stillwell mentioned, we can adjust that schedule while ensuring that we can still be within the April 17 deadline. The criteria for drawing these districts includes requirements that come from both federal and state law. Under federal law, the requirements include that the districts be equal in population. And traditionally, the courts have interpreted that to mean that there should be no more than a 10% difference between the most populated and least populated district. The second federal law is the Federal Voting Rights Act, so want to be mindful of that to make sure we're not diluting the voting strength of a protected class, but on the flip side, not practicing racial gerrymandering, making race or ethnicity only our main factor. Under the state law, we have a list of rank-order criteria, so if it's not possible to adhere to all of these, we even want to prioritize the ones that are higher in the list, the very highest being that the districts are contiguous, just one piece each. Number two, to avoid dividing neighborhoods or communities of interest, which are socioeconomic geographic areas that should be kept together. Number three is to have districts with easily identifiable boundaries. And number four is to have districts that are compact, in that they do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And lastly, we have this prohibition against favoring or discriminating against a political party. On the far-right side of the screen, you will see, under the heading, "Other Traditional Redistricting Principles." These are factors you may consider, so long as it is not at the expense of the federal and state criteria. And these include minimizing voters shifted to different election years, respecting voters' choices or continuity in office, accounting for future population growth, and preserving the core of existing districts. The current plan looks like this, where we have District 1 in the northwest, District 2 in the northeast, District 3 in the southwest, and District 4 in the southeast, and the district boundaries converge at the intersection of Main and Broadway. Under the current plan, the total population deviation is just over 18%, so that's greater than the threshold, which is considered equal population. So that is the main factor that prevents us from continuing with the current plan. However, there are no voting rights concerns that we can tell. There are three districts with a majority Latino citizen voting age population, and all districts are contiguous. We have received testimony that the districts divide neighborhoods. That actually was in reference to one of the minimal change plans, but because the minimal change plan is a cleaned-up version of the current plan, we can safely assume that that would apply to the current plan as well. The public commenters did not indicate where exactly those neighborhoods are split, but that's the testimony that was received. The boundaries may not be as easily identifiable. They're not very straight in some places. The districts are relatively compact, but there are places where it may not be as compact as it could be. And currently, District 1 is the most underpopulated district at minus 10%, so District 1 needs to expand in territory in order to get to the right amount of population. So the first option is the Minimal Change Plan A, which takes the current plan and adjusts it ever so slightly so that the deviation is less than 10%. In fact, it's just over 5%. There's no appreciating... There's no appreciable difference from the current districts in terms of voting rights, contiguity, neighborhood or community of interest integrity, or compactness. The boundaries may be more easily identifiable since they are straighter in some places. For example, on the northeast side of the city, the boundary now goes right along Sway Road, and I know I'm pronouncing that correctly. And, yeah, so, yeah, that's how the Minimal Change Plan kind of cleans up the current plan. You do have some of the city's population shifting to a different district, but not too much. And there's no difference from the current districts in terms of continuity of office or the core of each district. Under this plan, the most underpopulated district is District Three at minus 3%. And the reason I give the most underpopulated district is if you want to account for future population growth, ideally that most underpopulated district is where most of that future growth is going to occur. With Minimal Change Plan B, it's an even lower population deviation of just over 3%. And so it's like the other Minimal Change Plan, you don't have much difference from the current districts. You make the boundaries a little straighter in places. And the main difference between this and Plan A is that with District One, it's...with Plan A, you move District One so that you continue this southern boundary all the way to Broadway, so that you have this corner of downtown in District One. But with Minimal Change Plan B, you leave that square in District Three and grow District One by going out toward the west. So under this plan, just under 4% of the city's population would shift to a different district, almost all of them to one with a later election year. And there would be no difference from the current districts in terms of continuity of office or the core of each district. And under this plan, the most underpopulated district is District One at just under minus So you'll notice with these Minimal Change Plans, the proposed boundaries follow pretty closely the existing district boundaries. The existing district boundaries are in black, and the proposed boundaries are in yellow and with colored fill. With the Quadrant Plan, it's more of a moderate change approach, so you're not really sticking too closely to the current district boundaries. You still have the same general configuration where District One is northwest, District Two is northeast, District Three is southwest, and District Four is southeast. But with the Quadrant Plan, it's much more aligned with the two main arteries of Main Street and Broadway. And under this plan, it would be a total population deviation of just over 6%. There are still three districts with a majority Latino citizen voting age population, but the percentages in different districts fluctuate. Public testimony has indicated that it improves upon the current plan in terms of neighborhood integrity, and the boundaries are much more easily identifiable since they are very straight and follow those two major arteries, which also serves to make the districts more compact. With this plan, a full quarter of the city's population would shift to a different district, 4% to one with an earlier election year, and 8% to one with a later election year. And the rest would move to a different district but under the same election year. But the core of each district would remain, and there would be the opportunity for incumbent council members to run in their own districts if they so choose. The most underpopulated district under this plan would be District Two in the northeast at just under 3%. I did skip over...we received a public submission that was very similar to Minimal Change Plan B, and the problem with this plan is that it has too high of a total population deviation, 21%. And that is because it takes District One all the way down to Stoll rather than under Minimal Change Plan B, which has it at Morrison. So that would...but Minimal Change Plan B would achieve all of the stated goals of this public plan by uniting West Main Street and District One and accounting for population growth and would have the minimum amount of people shifted. But like I said, it draws the border along Stoll rather than Morrison, which causes District One to be too overpopulated and District Three to be too underpopulated. So sorry I skipped that, but returning to the Quadrant Plan, we have the original Quadrant Plan here, and then there was a public suggestion for revising the Quadrant Plan. And this public submission is population balanced. It's actually the same deviation as the original Quadrant Plan, 6.2%. And you'd still have three districts with a majority Latino citizen voting age population. It's almost identical to the original Quadrant Plan in terms of demographics, because the only change that's being made is the area west of Skyway Drive, that includes the airport and a lot of the industrial parks out there, including a lot of government facilities on the very far southern boundary. Those are moved into District Three. Only 416 people live in that area, so that's why there's not really much of an effect on the demographics. So you could argue that this is even more of a Quadrant Plan because District Three now reaches the southwestern border of the city. So with the original Quadrant Plan, you have the boundary along Beteravia. Lastly, we have a...we came up with another revision of the Quadrant Plan that kind of builds on the idea of that public revision by giving even more territory in the southwest to District Three. This would result in a deviation of just under 9%, still under the 10% threshold. You would have still three districts with a majority Latino citizen voting age population. It's mostly identical to the original Quadrant Plan in terms of demographics, but District Three is less populated and District Four is more so. So what this does is places the remaining industrial area near the airport into District Three, including the areas that are to the east of Skyway Drive. And it makes the boundary along the Revva Track and trail that goes off that track. So you have kind of a more aesthetically pleasing stepwise boundary between District Three and Four. Again, it's not possible for District Three to go all the way to Broadway because of the population constraints. So under this plan, the most underpopulated district is District Three at almost 5% underpopulated, and that is in line with future growth projections. So even though this is a higher total deviation, it's higher because we're underpopulating District Three, and since we anticipate that a lot of the growth is going to take place there over the next decade, this...there's...we're allowing some cushion for this...in theory, for this deviation to decrease over the course of the decade. So you might say that this is even more of a Quadrant Plan because District Three now occupies almost all of the southwestern part of the city. So this is the final slide I have, and what I have here is kind of a potential decision path that you might take in trying to parse out these plans. And it's just a possibility, it's ultimately up to you how you want to make this decision, but you could potentially do something like this, where you first ask yourselves, do you prefer the Minimal Change or the Quadrant approach? Because these are really two...it's kind of a binary option, they're very different approaches, so whether you prefer one or the other will then be helpful in determining the next step. So if you prefer the Minimal Change approach, then you can decide whether Plan A or B is better. Like I said, that one public plan would not be legally allowable because of that too high of a deviation. But if you instead prefer the Quadrant approach, you can then decide which variation of that approach you prefer, whether it's the original Quadrant Plan where District Three ends at Beteravia Road and everything to the south is in District Four, the public revision to that plan where District Three goes past Beteravia Road to include just the airport area, or the NDC revision to the Quadrant Plan where District Three goes past Beteravia Road to include the whole airport and industrial area. And lastly, there's a link here to the interactive review map that I can go into and show you exactly where the boundaries are under each of these plans if you want to look more closely at that. So thanks for your attention and happy to take your questions.
Any questions from the council? Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What was the input from the public that you got to change the Quadrant Map from the one that you gave us two weeks ago? What was their main focus on why they didn't like it? I was originally in favor of Map...I was originally in favor of Map B, but after talking to some other people, the Quadrant Map does give a little cleaner demarcation of the lines that we draw, while we can still do that. What was their main input, if you know?
So the one revision that we received to the Quadrant Plan, I think the main impetus behind it was just to have more of a variety of options for the council to consider, and maybe you can have a different approach to the airport, perhaps. Perhaps it might be better represented in District Three.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Waterfield, any questions from you?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, I'll open this up for a public hearing at this point. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence or requests to speak in the building?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. Staff received a written comment from Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt in support of the Quadrant Map. Also, a new map was submitted by Alfredo Ruiz, which was named by the demographer as Minimal Change Public Plan Map, as well as a map that was submitted directly to the demographer by Glenn Morris and was named Quadrant Plan Public Revision Map. At a prior meeting, the council received written comments submitted by Kathy Sharum, David Dennis, and, again, Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt, supporting the Quadrant Map. And, Madam Mayor, I have one in-house request to speak, and then I have...we have a couple of people that we need to call back who would like to make some comments on the phone. But I have this for speaker here.
Gary Hall.
Good evening again. My name is still Gary Hall. I have reviewed all the proposed maps, and as I stated previously, I believe the Quadrant approach is far superior in meeting all overall redistricting objectives. The recent addition of the Quadrant Plan Public Revision dated...where is he? Glenn Lee? I was going to give him credit for calling that the Glenn Map is even more logical and practical than the original Quadrant. I support the Quadrant Plan Public Revision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we received a phone call earlier from Sarah Islandstein. She's a third-year resident of Santa Maria. Her preference is the Quadrant Map. She wants to keep communities of interest together, although did not mention the by-specific name. Also, she wanted to maintain the Main and Broadway corridors. I believe Deputy City Clerk Cleary is going to be contacting a member of the public and...
Daryl, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead with your comments.
My name's Daryl Shack, SEIU Local 620 Executive Director. I'd like to support any one of the Quadrant Plans, I think, as far as that going forward. I think if you're going to make a change and do this the right way and go through the process of redrawing the maps, that should stay away from the Minimal Change Plans that are there. If there's a preference, obviously, I think I'd be looking at Quadrant Plan Public Revision. Seems to be the most clean and, you know, it seems to be less confusion with regards to the map and the way that it's laid out, and there's also still very little variation in terms of the overall demographics. So I'd like to express support for Quadrant Plan Public Revision, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Deputy Cleary, is there any others that you need to contact back?
Madam Mayor, I believe we have one more caller. It's Daniel Mora, and let me get him on the line.
Yes, go ahead.
My name's Daniel Mora with the Central Coast Labor Council. We represent workers on the Central Coast, including many thousands in Santa Maria. Thank you for having us, you know, be able to speak, the public speak on this issue. We feel that the Quadrant Plan Maps are generally much clearer, and they best represent our population here in the city. The Quadrant Maps address the consensus agreement that Broadway and Main should be the main dividing lines. It provides clear district borders, it'll keep communities of interest together, and it will cut down on any confusion that residents may have potentially in other maps due to the very clear lines in this map. So we urge the council to please consider one of the three Quadrant Plans as the starting point of this process moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Cleary, any others that you need to contact back?
I believe that was the last call.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I believe that's it.
Thank you. And let's see, okay, I will close the public hearing now and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and guidance for staff. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Daniel, would you put up the map again for the Quadrant Modified that was submitted by Mr. Morris?
What I could do is actually explain the boundary between District Three and Four. So you start at the intersection of Main Street and Broadway, you go down Broadway, you go west on Battles, and then you go south on Thornburg, and you go west on Beteravia, and you go south on Skyway until you get to the boundary of the city.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Daniel. Madam Mayor, are you looking for more guidance here? Is that it?
I'm looking for comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have some.
Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the last couple of years, I mean, I would like to go back to even before, before the district exists. I have the pleasure of getting to know one specific area, one community of interest, really, really one of, it's a great area that is the main, West Main Street. That area, I have walked up so many times as, even before I served as council member. We did open streets there. I have knocked on all the, all the, the south side and it's just a great community. People go there, they go and buy food, they buy groceries, they have fun. There's restaurants. I've gotten to get to know them really well and have so many friends already there. And we talk a lot about community of interest. It's a constant conversation about it. The quadrant map will take away that community of interest. All that area, it's, we, we are there. We go there, we buy there, we interact, we make friends. So, so that's, that's one of the reasons and, I mean, there's so many, we talk about three districts with a majority on Latino voting. I count four, actually. Three districts plus the mayor seat. So, and that represents Santa Maria. And it's a, and one thing that really caught me, it's the fact that less than two years ago, already knocked on those doors. I knocked on every single door and I talked with every single of my constituents and built this trust and this relationship. And suddenly, we want really to take this away from them? We talk about confusion. Our duty as candidates and now as a representative is to reach out to our community, to let people know who the representative is. And that was part of the reason why I knocked on those doors. I went from the north to the south to let them know that I'm there for them. And I don't think it's fair for constituents to, one day, you know, it's, now it's, Carlos is gone. Now there's somebody else. So I think that's, that's not going to help the, the image of the city that just suddenly we're just going to throw everything and modify. I mean, we talk about a change and I was looking at, oh, here, in quadrant map, they talk about 24.8% of the population is going to move from one district to the other. That's not a small change. That's one quarter, more than a quarter of the, almost a quarter of the city. So I think it's, that's why I support the minimum, the minimum map idea. I think that's a, the minimum change can make this transition easier, smoother, so we can keep working on keeping our, you know, staying there for them, for our communities. And that's why I, I'm more inclined to support the minimal change map B. And I, I don't, personally, I don't want West Main Street to be divided. And, and I think it's a, it's one of the duties and one of the, the comments here, the, sorry, the laws here is to not divide neighborhood. And the quadrant map, that's exactly what it does. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say that I'm in support of quadrant map with the public revisions and my reasoning for being inclined more towards this particular map is because of the clear division between Main and Broadway. Since the city of Santa Maria started, even before redistricting, conversations took place prior to the first redistricting process, I think Councilmember Cordero was the one who said it best at the last meeting and that was that Main and Broadway have always been one of our main dividers within the city. And during conversations that we've had here on the dais, we've come to consensus when it comes to Main and Broadway being one of the main dividers for redistricting. And to stay consistent with the message that the city council has been putting forth, I believe that moving forward with the public, with the quadrant map, the one with the public revision would be ideal. Additionally, I would disagree with Councilmember Escobedo when he says that the quadrant map actually divides communities of interest because it, it, it does not. It does the opposite. It keeps communities of interest together, especially when you look at the demographics when, the demographics within that quadrant map and the demographics in the various other maps. And the last point that I would make is that redistricting can oftentimes be a convoluted process and I'm sure that many of us have had conversations with constituents where they are confused as to which map or which district they are in. And having a clear set of district lines or boundaries will make it much easier for constituents to know exactly or to know best where, where they, where they land within their, within their district. And so I am in favor of the quadrant map, not just because, again, it keeps communities of interest, not only because it really sets Main and Broadway as a clear divider, but it also makes it so that the lines are not as, what's the word? Jagged, what's the term I'm trying to use?
Jagged, yeah.
No. Jagged, thank you. It doesn't make them as jagged, jagged?
Jagged, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't make them that. It's, it's much smoother and clear. And so that, that is my point, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you. Can you hear me clearly?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, you know what? I'm, I'm listening to everyone and I believe that Councilmember Carlos Escobedo makes an excellent, excellent point because he speaks about the constituents and it is the constituents that we are trying to make them feel more comfortable in this whole district game that we are, has been forced on us. And this, this minimal change on Plan B makes it easier for those that, you know, we have, we have been in this game for a little while and it's going to be until the duration of the city of Santa Maria, but it gives them an easier transition to understand as opposed to tearing apart, you know, District 4 and just making it go over one, one territory to the next and bringing two all over, you know, down further and one just makes it, you know, a smoother transition for everybody. Since we're in this new, I think this, the way to go is for a smoother transition for our constituents. And I, I, I like the minimal change of Plan B map. Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's my turn here. Oh, yes.
I want to talk again.
Go ahead, you may.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You can talk as many times as you want.
I, I want to respect what my colleague, Mr. Escobedo, has to say here, but I want to add to that, that a very, and I didn't really know this person until I got on the council more so, but this individual that I'm thinking of specifically is a businessperson and he's in District 1. He's your constituent as the maps go out. And I'll be really frank with you, I don't know that he's going to call you, I don't know that he's not going to call you, but I can assure you, he's going to call me. And that's a foundation that I've laid and he's laid. So, and I think going back to when we first went to districts, which I will say again, I was against and I'm still against, but we're here and we're doing districts and it's been codified that we're not running the city by districts, we're governing the city as a whole. We're only being elected by districts. So I, I, I think that there's a little ownership to the district that maybe is, is not really there. I, I mean, we can still represent these people that you befriended even before you were on the council and you should represent them. You should take, take them and, and accommodate their needs and whatnot, but, but I don't, I don't really think that we're losing anything by this house or that house not being in my district. When we first went to districts, my son couldn't vote for me because he was half a block out of my district. I mean, so, so I, you know, they just, it's just one of those things that's going to happen and I, I don't, I don't think we're going to lose anything major if a particular business or a few blocks is not actually in our district if we treat it the right way. If we go in and say, well, the districts is one thing, but I still represent you as a, as a member of this community, no matter what district you're in. You could be down by the airport and you're still going to be of service to that, that person. It doesn't mean that you're not going to talk to them and in fact, it's in our, it's in our understanding of how we're going to run the city. We should approach each person's problems as a whole, not, not say, whoa, well, you're not in my district, I can't help you, you got to call so-and-so. So I, I don't want to put too much credibility in the fact that if something falls out of our district, that, that we're losing something. I don't, I don't want to ever think that way because there's not a place on this city map here that both, that all five of us should not be looking at and saying, we're going to represent the people that live there regardless of their, of the district that they live in. So I, I guess that's, that's about it for me. I'm going to stay with where I was and, and go with the quadrant map.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to add that when it comes to this redistricting process, we are ultimately wanting, part of this process is to also hear from our constituents, from the community as to what their needs and wants are and from the start, well, since the last meeting and even leading into today's meeting, the overwhelming support that we've heard via public comment has been for one of the quadrant maps. And it'd be really disappointing for us to not listen to the needs and wants of constituents who have taken the time to draft maps, to come and speak during public comment to address us, only for us to be stuck in our ways in what we believe is, you know, in best interest of our elected seats.
Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Definitely do agree with Mr. Cordero in regards, we were elected by, by district, but we represent and we're covered by everybody. Nevertheless, I think that there's something that has been constantly expressed by either council members or people up there is the confusion. Make it easier, make it as simple as possible. Well, how about that overnight, they said, okay, you know, you're not, you're not represented by this person anymore, you're represented by this person, but you would for this person, but this person, because that person built your trust, built trust and they talk about it and they get to know you. But you don't know this person. So that's, that's, I don't know you guys, but I don't, I wouldn't like that. I wouldn't like that suddenly somebody decided that, you know, we're going to change here because it's easier to do these other things. And eventually, there's something that hasn't been told that Main and Broadway is going to eventually not be in the downtown of Santa Maria in a couple of years. We're expanding south, so people's going, we're going to get bigger. So we can, I mean, eventually, that's going to change. This map is going to change. We're growing. Northwest is not growing a lot because it's basically most single-family houses, but I wouldn't like to just approach to my, to my constituents, say, you know, guys, so we decided that I'm not your representative anymore. Thank you for your vote and here you go. I don't like, I don't like the fact of, I don't like how that would look like and that confusion that is going to build. So we talk about confusion, dividing a community, a neighborhood, that's, that's, that's not something I want the city to, to have and go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield, did you have any extra comments?
I'm sorry, I had to take myself off mute. No, I, I am good with what I previously said.
Okay, I'll make my comments now. I think, looking at the maps as they are, I think the minimum amount of change I think is, is best, whether you have, you have a 24.18% change for the quadrant map. The third district, and if, if any of you looked at what's going in through planning and development right now, we are going to see that within three years, I think, we're going to see that just expand, expand. And the quadrant map is going to be really outdated. We initially, when we decided we wanted to all be part of Main and Broadway because we wanted everyone to have a vested interest in that and we still do, but by the time, in 10 years, when we go and do this redistricting again, that, I don't, I don't think that's even going to be a consideration. And, and we're going through the general plan amendment right now. We are going to be making plans on how we want Santa Maria to grow and I'm not sure how that's going to take effect, but we'll be finished with that plan in what, in a couple of years from now? The quadrant map will be obsolete and, and that is a concern I have. Also, when you have communities of interest, people say clear division. I don't think you can divide people, I don't think you can divide communities of interest. And you don't have this on North Broadway, you don't have it on South Broadway and you don't have it on East Main Street, but on West Main Street you do. My husband and I owned a business there for 50 years. We live on the northwest side of town and I'll tell you what, that is a community of interest on both sides of Main Street. The businesses during the COVID where a lot of businesses were shut down and people weren't doing business, that side of town was jumping. I mean, all the time, there was activity. This is a whole community on the west side of town. And if you don't live there, if you don't shop there, you don't get to see it. But it definitely is, you've got the parks, the people are outside, they're, everything. It's, that's where they meet each other and see each other and I just, you can, you can say you can draw a clean line down Main Street, but to me, it's not a clean line when you're talking about people and communities of interest. And so I would, I would like to just support a minimal change and not, not interested in the quadrant map because like I said, I think within three years, it's going to be obsolete. But then, we don't know what Santa Maria is going to look like and so in a couple of years, when we finish up our general plan, we will get, we'll, we'll have a better look at what's going to happen. And at that time, I don't think that we'll even be able to consider, I won't be around, but even consider Main and Broadway anymore. That'll, because things are going to change dramatically here. I think that's, I think that's the only comments I had. Ms. Soto.
Thank you. I understand that we have to account for future population growth, but that is being accounted for with the deviations that are presented before us and that's why the way that the law is written allows for there to be deviation up to 10% because they know that there is no such thing as a perfect map and, and the law essentially agrees.
And the law essentially agrees that we, as elected officials, have to move forward with a map that best fits the needs of our residents. And again, I just want to reiterate that the maps that are before us, the ones that are under the 10% deviation do account for future population growth. And rather than making assumptions of how things will be 10 years from now, we need to make a decision based on what is before us and know that when these changes, when we're ready to make changes, that time will come as well in 10 years from now to make changes on the maps and choose a map that best fits the needs of the communities at that time. I believe that, I believe it was Councilmember Escobedo who said it best, that, you know, all four districts, in an essence, are very much similar. And so to make the statement that anything south of West Main Street is not part of the communities of interest in that subsection of what would be District Three in the quadrant map is not a good enough statement, in my opinion. Again, the vast majority of the folks that have come before the city council have come in favor of a quadrant map. And it would be disappointing for the city council to move in a direction or head in a direction that is not one that listens to the voices of the folks that have been speaking in favor of a quadrant map. And so with that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion in support of the quadrant map.
I would like to make a comment. We do have people that come and submit maps, but they also call us and talk to us. And a lot of people that I know that are in business, especially on West Main, they work. They work in mom and pop shops. They don't have even the ability to go to luncheons and hear what people say because they're busy working. And they're busy working when we start this meeting. So anyway, okay. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I couldn't understand what Councilmember Soto mentioned that I said.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe you said that, well, maybe it was difficult for me to understand, but I thought it was something along the lines that the population within the city of Santa Maria is my understanding of what your comment was, that was that they were all similar in some sense?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to make, I mean, we're almost 80%, maybe more, Latino population. So, I mean, that's there. So, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a majority. And my comment was in regards to the three districts, that it says, according to a presentation, there are Latino voting majority. I think there's four, if you talk about the mayor's seat. So I just want to make that statement. Thank you.
Okay, and you were going to make a motion then?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion in favor of the quadrant plan, the quadrant plan public revisions map.
Thank you.
Would you put that map up, please? That's the one, okay.
To be clear, that's the A5 map on the region.
Okay.
A5, okay. Should we say A5? Okay.
Could you run the map up a little bit so we can see the bottom map? And that, this map, this map actually takes in the golf course too, right?
That, I believe that is--
Somebody from the golf course called me and asked me about that. And I said, yeah, I think it does.
So the golf course would be in District Four under this plan. And under the NDC revision, there would be half of it in District Three.
Okay, and the motion's on the floor, Madam--
There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
Public quadrant, public provision, okay. A5, okay. There is a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please take the roll? Unless someone wants further discussion, but I think we beat this up pretty bad. So let's just-- Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
One more time, please.
No.
Madam Mayor Patino? No. Okay, do I have another motion?
Can we make another motion?
You go ahead.
Okay. One moment, please. Let me record those votes, just one second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the Minimal Change Plan B map.
I'll second.
A2, okay.
Is that the one up there now?
I don't have, I'm not looking at what you guys were looking at as far as A2, but--
Okay, that's Plan B map with minimal change.
A2 is listed on--
Minimal Change Plan B?
Yes. Okay, so I have a motion and a second? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield? Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
A2 passes.
Okay, it would appear, map A2, Minimal Change Plan B passes. Three, two, two votes.
Okay.
Councilmember Cordero, no. And Councilmember Soto, no.
Thank you. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Oh, we have one more order of business--
Oh, I'm sorry, we're supposed to do the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So if map, item A2, which is the Minimal Change Plan B map, it is now that we ask to take that--
Ordinance and put into the municipal court. Okay, got it. So that's section 2-25-04 and 2-25-05.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation on the Measure U annual report for the period ending June 30th, 2021, and receive and file the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee annual report. And I believe I just lost Councilmember Waterfield.
Okay, staff report is being made by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Hackelman, and Measure U Committee Vice Chair, Mr. Owen. Mr. Hackelman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present this report. I just wanted to say before we begin, it's going to be Vice Chair Owen who will be giving the presentation to you. But the staff worked in close collaboration with the committee and had a lot of great discussion. And it was truly a pleasure to work with these public servants that have been really conscientious about doing their role as committee members. And I'd like to turn this over to Vice Chair Owen at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Owen. We haven't seen you in a year.
You haven't missed anything. Fire season's still going on and I'm still working.
It is.
Madam Mayor, the Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee met in January and in February. We received an outstanding presentation from city staff. They do it every year. They break this plan down and break all these millions of dollars down into real small bites so that we can all understand what the money is being spent for and how much came in and how much went out. And I want to thank staff for that and the entire city staff for managing the Measure U program and keeping their service to the city as it should be. I also want to bring my regards from Chair Benedetti. It's tax season and he's still at his desk, I'm sure, you know, burning the midnight oil. We did have some discussions and there were, all our questions were answered by staff. And we did determine that all the money spent was spent in accordance with council direction and what I would call the community's desire in passing Measure U. And that ends my report, actually, unless there's questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? So we did, we did everything we were supposed to do? Say yes.
You always do.
Thank you. Are any members of the committee here besides you?
I don't see anyone.
Oh, okay, because I was going to ask you to introduce them, okay. Thank you very much and thank you for your service.
Thanks a lot, Jack.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just to make it clear, we had no calls.
We have no calls?
And no requests to speak on that.
Okay, thank you very much. So bring it back to council for discussion. There weren't any questions? And do we need a motion or just report and file? Okay, so the report has been received and will be filed. The next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So the next meeting of the city council is April 5th. It will be back at the city council chambers. We have a number of proclamations. One of the highlights will be Hometown Heroes presentation. We have a number of people to recognize this year. Also, on regular business items, we have the Block Grant Advisory Committee's CDBG recommendations for 2022, 23, the Measure A program updates for road spending, the housing element update, and then the approval of the local roadway safety plan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we'll have reports from, oral reports from council members? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After the last council meeting, I did the Ben Hay Show the very next day. It was on a Thursday this time, not the normal Wednesday morning. Then on the 3rd of this month, I went to the Santa Maria Style Business Meeting out at the Radisson. I got to say that I think Glenn left, but they had a really good cooperation going out there. There was a lot of people. It was very well put out there. There was a lot of businesses and a lot of nonprofits that were out there. I thought it was very well done and it was nice to see the community starting to open up. On the 7th, I was at the ribbon cutting for the new Kane Chicken Place on Vedderavia. That was, there wasn't a lot of people there. Carlos Escobedo was there. They were keeping it COVID-protected. It was mostly employees and chamber people and, of course, us. It was a nice opening and we learned a lot in there about the business and how long it's been around. I was amazed. I told my wife a couple of days later, I said, I'm going to go down and buy some of that chicken. And I drove down there.
And you couldn't get in?
The line went out of the business, through the parking lot, west in the parking lot in front of the businesses that are being constructed, north a little bit more through the back part of the parking lot and out onto College Street down to where the cemetery is. And so we didn't have chicken like that that night. Then on the 8th, I attended the Mesa STEM Hancock College facility, the new facility they have there. If you're familiar with the campus, it's where the police department used to be several years ago. And it's a real impressive facility that these young children, these young children, these young kids, young adults are going to to learn. And it really accentuates the idea that some of these kids, they're really smart. And it takes them on and gives them a place to go. And it was a very nice presentation. And then I met a meeting with, well, I guess we just covered that with the quadrant map. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Monday, the 7th, I attended the Kane's self-opening. Yeah, I ended up being pretty hungry. It was a little bit crazy. They were getting used to. And yeah, I tried to stop by later. Now I was, I'll wait maybe a couple of weeks. I mean, hopefully. But yeah, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Was the chicken good? Is it true that you all also got a year's worth of chicken for free?
Oh, one of my friends got it.
No. Oh, my, a friend of ours got a year's worth of chicken for free. They were one of the first customers. Yeah, that did happen.
I mean, too busy.
That's cool.
Thank you.
No comment, no reportable item.
Okay. March 2nd, I did a, with Park Rangers and Code Compliance, I did a tour of our riverbed. And I'm just glad that when we go over the river, we really go over the, yeah, the river, that we really can't see all the graffiti that's painted under the bridge and the mess that's under there because it is a mess. And Caltrans is supposed to be cleaning it up. I was told a week ago it'd be in a couple of weeks. So I guess maybe in about a week, we'll see Caltrans doing something down there. March 3rd, I did Read Across America and I read to three, one second grade class and two fourth grade classes. And went to the Planning Commission study session. I did the Expo Business to Business Networking Event at the Radisson. That was a great event to see all the people that are networking in the community. And people are, people were really excited to be out. Everyone was looking like they were having a great time and they were excited to see people. So it was really a very, very well-attended event. On March 5th, I attended teleconference, Livable California. And I want to thank you for, Mr. Cordero, for filling in for me while I was out of town. I appreciate that.
One more thing for me, Madam Mayor. I forgot, I read it also at the Read Across America. I had a very, very depressing experience there. Somehow my age came up and I said, how old do you think I am? And this one kid looked, he says, 80?
They always ask your age and how much money you make. Yeah. And how did you get there? Yeah. Well, with me, they always want to know my age. And on March 9th, I did the, because I was out of town, I did a roundtable discussion with League of Cities and SB CAG Special Joint Meeting. On March 10th, I did the Library Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. And that's within the county of Santa Barbara. So it really works out good when you can do Zoom meetings so you don't have to drive to Santa Barbara or you don't have to drive to Buellton or Solvang. And you get some of these meetings accomplished in a much shorter amount of time. On the 11th, I did the Elected Leaders Forum to address homelessness. And on March 14th, I had my mayor's team council meetings, one at Pioneer High School and the other at Santa Maria High School. And that is it. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting.